So, we want to get started. We know the governor has a very busy schedule. And the first thing we want to do is thank him because residents who've been here for a long time have told me there's never been a sitting governor that's come to Heritage Village. So, thank you.[20.23][20.23][applause] In way of some introductions, Arthur O'Neil, our state representative, is here.[24.11][24.11][applause] Donna Gelati, our vice president.[26.11][26.11][applause] Jim Judd, our treasurer.[28.11][28.11][applause] And Angela Tapie, our COO.[30.11][30.11][applause]
Hey.
Oh, I didn't meet him. Wait a second.
I don't feel bad now. He usually leaves me out.
Okay, so much for funding. State Senator Eric Bithal. A couple more announcements. On January, I'm sorry, on October 3rd and October 24th, the Democrat and Republican Clubs at Heritage Village are sponsoring forums. On October 3rd, it'll be a forum here at Saracaw where the first selectmen candidates will appear. On October 24th, there'll be the other selectmen who are running for office this year. So, I want to thank both the Republican and Democratic Clubs working on this in a bipartisan way.[66.68][66.68][applause] So, to the governor, what I'd like to say is, your attendance along with your staff, we've done quick calculations. You have lowered the average age of Heritage Village by 2.6 years by your coming.[85.97][85.97][laughter] So, thank you for that.[88.42][88.42][applause] But what I want to say is, Heritage Village is a vibrant community. We will be opening officially our new pickleball courts. We have tennis, we have volleyball, badminton, mahjong, and everything else under the sun. So, we're very proud of what we have and our heritage that goes beyond 50 years. We always have to look to the future, both immediate and long term, but I can tell you with the staff we have in place, we're in good hands. So, without further ado, I want to introduce Governor Lamont.[124.11][124.11][applause]
Thank you, Jerry. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Everywhere you go, they say, "The governor's never been here before." What did governors used to do? I mean, I thought that this was our job. And, um...
No, that's all right. No worries.
Eric, I'll help you out with your comms work next time. A little public relations. Remember what we got to do here. And, um, only brought down the average age 2.6 years, as having said. Hey, look, I want to say something. I think, um, I saw Rafael Nadal beat a guy who was 10 years his junior yesterday. And I know it's a time for a new generation of leadership, but come and get us. We're ready to keep on fighting. And, uh, Tom Brady, he's still throwing a pretty tight spiral in his 40s. Mick Jagger is filling Shea Stadium. And, uh, I don't know, I think the average age of a presidential candidate seems to be in their 70s. So, uh, you know, we got a lot of kick going here. I am so proud to be your governor. Been in this job for about eight months. Proud to be here as part of a bipartisan team. And, um, I come out of the business world, so I have a little different background than most of the governors that came before me. And, um, I had a couple of priorities coming into this cycle. It happens pretty fast. You get elected in November, you got to put together a government in about 60 days, you got to have a budget that's ready to go, you present to the legislature in early January. But my priority number one was to get a budget on time. These guys know, you know, two years ago, it wasn't until late October that they got a budget. And what that means to, you know, mayors and first selectmen and superintendent of schools. Priority number two for me was to get an honest budget done on time without raising tax rates. I thought that was really important. You know, the last few cycles, those rates keep going up just a little bit, they always tell me, but it makes a difference. And, uh, you know, folks are getting squeezed. And number three, I want to do everything I could to at least hold down the pressure on property taxes. And one way I could do that was continuing to make our investments in education. And that's what we did in this budget cycle. And you in Southbury here are blessed with one of the great school systems in the state. I was just talking to the first selectmen. You got young people moving to Southbury in part because of this amazing school system. And if I have, you know, one other priority is to make sure we maintain our commitment to education. That also means technical education. Because, um, you know, I'm 65, it's... Thank you. Somebody likes that.[287.44][287.44][applause] You know, it's not often that we have thousands of really good-paying jobs that we're having a hard time filling because we're not training the people for those jobs out there. And that is just so key to the future of the state of Connecticut. So key for us to keep our children and our grandchildren able to come back to Connecticut, make sure they have that opportunity. And, um, right now, as you look around the world, look, Florida can sell sunshine and Texas has oil. That's not our strength. Our strength has always been the strength of our people. You know, the best-trained, most productive, best-educated workforce in the world. And that's a priority. I've got to make sure we have that edge. Look, we've been talking to Amazon and Netflix and a lot of different companies, and they are traveling the world looking for talent. And I'm trying to tell them, "Look no further. Stay right here in the state of Connecticut. We got the talent you need." Talent, we continue to make those investments. At the same time, we hold the line on tax rates, do everything we can to bring down the property taxes. And I understand that we're going to have a bit of a conversation, which I'm happy to take your questions on, what we do about electric rates and what that can mean, what we do about water rates, and all the other ways that make Connecticut a little more expensive than it should be. And I can't turn it around overnight, but we're going to start right now, and the turnaround is just beginning. Thank you, everybody.[373.91][373.91][applause]
So, if you have a question for the governor, we've set up two microphones, both sides of the auditorium. If you get in line there, we'll go from one side to the other. Going there, make sure you get on our TV channel so everything gets recorded that people can watch at home.
Governor, thanks so much for being here. My first question regarding the budget, I know a priority for you about getting a budget passed on time that was balanced, but it creates more optimism in the business community that our governments, they have their act together after so many years of delayed budgets. Are you hearing a positive response from the business community since they recognize that there's a new day?
Yeah, thank you. I'll start with that, and then maybe my friends here can chime in as well. But, um, we had to do everything we can to restart our relationship with the business community. Can you hear me? And, um, that meant, A, I went, reached out to every single employer, large and small, that I could reach out to, and tell them, "My door is open and I want to work with you." And, um, and that's made a difference in terms of our big businesses and small. You know, when it came to the budget, um, two years ago, you know, the budget was a little bit late, like I said, and it was $3.5 billion out of whack in the out years, you know, the day it was passed. And the rating agencies, those are the groups that sort of evaluate how the state is doing on a financial basis, you know, lowered our rating a little bit. Because we got a good budget passed, you know, on time, and we were trying to reduce our borrowing, something that we can, you know, discuss here a little bit, the rating agencies, who are the folks that the business community tends to look at to say, "How's Connecticut doing?" For the first time in almost 20 years, they raised our outlook. They said Connecticut's doing better. We have a lot of work we got to do, but they said they're getting started on it. And I got to send a message. You know, when I was thinking about this race some years ago, you probably remember when General Electric left. And they left in a cloud of dust, and they were not very happy with the state of Connecticut. And that was like a body blow, I think, to our morale as a state. And I had to make sure that doesn't happen again. So, Ed, it starts with the budget, it starts with the communication, it starts with the governor with an open door, and really the work across the aisle every chance I can.
Sure. Well, I absolutely agree with the governor that we have a lot more work to do. The last few years, we've seen at least the water stop coming in the bottom of the boat. We've plugged some gaps here and there. But I think that we still have a lot of work to do. The problems which the governor didn't create and in fact have been in the brewing for years and decades before even I got elected to office, have come to home to roost in a lot of ways, and it's up to us to solve these problems and convince the business community that we really are going to solve the problems and not just kick the can down the road another two years or four years in the hopes that we can all get reelected and somebody else will have to solve the problem at a later date. That certainly is a commitment that I think all of us have made, to not keep kicking the can down the road. And so, I commend the governor for that, and I think we do have a tremendous amount of work to do to solve what are really huge problems, but we have made a beginning.[593.79][593.79][applause]
And I agree as well with what has already been said. The only thing I would add to this is that there's a domino effect that comes from either not figuring this out and coming up with a fix, or figuring it out and fixing it. And it affects most of the people in this room. Most of you, some of you, the ones that aren't here, have already made decisions to leave Connecticut, pull up your roots and go. Young people are, if we don't continue to try to work and fix these problems, young people will not come into Connecticut. They'll find other places to go. And those of us, I guess like myself, that are mid-career, that have young or younger children at home, you know, we look at what our options are as well. So, but I think we're, what you, the message that you've heard already this morning in the brief few minutes that we've been speaking with you is that there's a commitment to work to try and fix this. And whether we get there or not remains to be seen. That's always the, kind of the, we don't have a crystal ball. But I think we have a governor that has a different mindset than prior administrations who's willing to take some of these challenges on with a legislature that is also committed to trying to do that. Because we don't serve because we feel like it. We serve because we want to bring better things to our communities and to our state.[670.12][670.12][applause]
The other side of the alternative?
Good morning. Mr. Governor, I'd like to ask, you started off by saying that you wanted to get a budget early or on time, and that you didn't want to raise taxes. But as I understand, the taxes have been raised quite a bit. That now I have to pay to get taxed when I get a haircut, or even when my dog gets a haircut. And the list goes on and on and on. So, is it fair to say that you haven't raised taxes, when true, not on income tax, but the money, you know, it's like a shell game, well, getting taxed in other areas, and you're still pushing for tolls, although much of the, many of the people in the state seem to be opposed to it. How would you respond? Thank you.
Well, you'll be happy to know there's no tax on haircuts, or on your dog getting a haircut. But let me address your question seriously. The sales tax used to be the revenue generator for the state of Connecticut. And back in those days, before Lowell P. Weicher, the sales tax applied to about 80%, 75% of our economy. And today, the sales tax applies to much less than half of the economy, for very good reasons. The world is changing. We don't always buy our lawnmower, it shears Roebuck anymore and pay a 6% sales tax on it. You buy it online, you buy it from Amazon. And, uh, and up until very recently, to your point, sir, that was sales tax-free. There was no sales tax. And I thought that was fundamentally unfair. I thought our Main Street merchants right here, you know, in Southbury, that were selling things retail over the counter, paying a sales tax, and the electronic e-commerce, Amazon economy, not or less likely to, was an unlevel playing field. So, we did expand the sales tax a little bit, but what I really wanted to do was not raise sales tax rates and not raise income tax rates. And that's what we were able to do, with a little pushback from some of my more liberal friends in the legislature.
Thank you.
Good morning, Governor. Thank you very much for showing up. I appreciate that. Homer Roosevelt once said, "It's better for everybody." When it is better for everybody. What I'd like to do is a way of putting tax question, just committed, you're asking what is your commitment to equal rights of all Americans, what you're going to do about it?
Thank you.[813.12][813.12][applause] No, I love that question, sir. Thank you. Um, our state and our country are divided in a way that I've never seen in my life. And, um, I think of Connecticut like a family. I think of Connecticut, you know, rich and poor, and black and white. We're all nutmegos. We're all in this together, and we look out for each other. That, I think, is the American spirit. What can I do specifically in order to take those words and put them into action? I do everything I can to make sure that our young people find that Connecticut is a place that they can call home and a place of real opportunity. I want to make sure that work pays. I want to make sure that the jobs are out there right now. I want to make sure that we have a workplace that's great, not just for, you know, fathers, but as well as mothers. I know that there are more and more single parents out there. It's just, perhaps a sad fact of life, but a fact of life, and I've got to do everything I can to make the worst place accommodating so that a single mom can continue working and also be able to take care of her child. I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that we look out for each other going forward. I did try and expand health care. I didn't do it a lot, you know, we inherited a $3.5 billion deficit, but we tried to expand health care just to take that risk a little bit off of people's tables and bring down the high cost of health care and let more people get that coverage. You know, I remember that every day as your governor, that we're looking out for everybody.[906.38][906.38][applause]
Good morning, Governor, and thank you so much for coming up here. I very seldom get to see an official like this. Two, two questions. Number one, you indicated your doors open for companies. Maybe you could list three companies that plan on coming back to Connecticut or joining Connecticut in 2020, because so many have left. And number two, which concerns me more, is what are you offering us retirees who are on fixed incomes to make us want to stay here? How can we do it at the expenses of taxes, as a prior gentleman mentioned, and other expenses to live in the state of Connecticut?
Now, good questions. The first one is, name three companies that are about to come to the state of Connecticut, and I will when we're able to do that. But I will tell you, I brought a company, helped bring a company to Hartford, which was on the edge of bankruptcy frankly, a couple of years ago, and called Infosys, and they're a major IT company. And that was transformative for the city of Hartford in Connecticut, because they trained people in IT, computer skills, and we got to have that skill set in order to keep, in this case, the insurance and health care right where they are. And the way we were able to recruit them to Connecticut and recruit them to Hartford was not just, you know, at that point it was Governor Malloy, it's not just the politicians taking the lead, it was my fellow business leaders. And when I had this guy, Ravi Kumar, come up to Hartford and sit down, we had the head of Stanley Black and Decker, we had the head of Travelers, we had a lot of the business leaders sit down and say why they wanted to work with Infosys if they came. So, I learned, I think, a little bit from that example, and I've got a business advisory council made up of business leaders from, you know, everything from health care and life sciences and advanced manufacturing. So, if there's a company interested in Connecticut or thinking about expanding in Connecticut, A, I find out about it, and they have a peer, somebody from the business community that's there to do it. I've got two amazing leaders of this. One is a guy named Jim Smith, maybe some of you know. He was, and his family did Webster Bank for many years. Mr. Inside, he knows every single CEO in the state. And a great friend of mine named Inger Nui, she was the head of Pepsi. So, she knows everybody, you know, around the country, on the board of Amazon, that doesn't hurt. So, we are making a big effort, and I hope to have some good news on that as well.[1061.15][1061.15][applause]
So, we'll have, you can't name three right now, though, is that right? Other than Infosys?
Say it again?
You can't name two other companies coming in in 2020 right now.
I can tell you that we're in ongoing discussions with companies, and there's some good news there. I'll tell you one thing I don't want to do, and I'd love, you know, my friends here from the legislature, I think we relied much too much on incentives and giveaways and, as opposed to just talking about what makes the state of Connecticut great. You know, I've got to fix the transportation system, we can talk about that. I know about 84 and folks from the Southbury getting down to New York. I've got to do everything I can in terms of education, I got to get our fiscal house in order. So, I don't want to lead with the incentives. By the way, your other question, I think, was for seniors and keeping folks here in the state of Connecticut. And, um, the first thing I, look, I couldn't promise to eliminate all the taxes, but I could promise for the first time in a long time to hold the line on tax rates, and that's what we did. Secondly, I make a big deal out of doing everything I can to make this a place you can call home, that our young people want to come back to, so families can stay together multigenerationally. We've done our best to hold the line on electric rates, which I know are pretty severe here at Heritage Village. When I got in the office, there was Millstone, you know, they run the nuclear power plant. They said, "We may have to pull the plug. It's, uh, we have an old plant." And that would have jacked up our prices overnight in a dramatic way. So, we're able to negotiate in good faith with them, so they stay in place over the next 15 years, and we're coming up with more homegrown energy and power so we can at least hold the line on electric rates, which I know are incredibly expensive for you, and they're also really expensive for our employers, because as manufacturing gets more capital-intensive, more big pieces of equipment, electric prices are a bigger and bigger piece of their costs. So, I'm trying to give people a little sense of certainty, that while I'm not able to reduce everything overnight, we're holding the line. And by the way, Connecticut's a lot more fun than Florida. Come on. This is a great place to be.[1198.83][1198.83][applause]
Thank you, Governor. Thank you.
Do you like to add something, Mark?
Yeah. Can I just say one thing that's, I've noticed over the years that I've been in the legislature and in the government, the key ingredient for economic growth for a state is that a governor is as fully engaged as possible, which I think Governor Lamont is doing, to really make that a top priority. If the governor is someone who seems not too interested in economic development, you're not going to get it. I've read over and over again about governors in other states like Virginia, that it would check in on a Friday to find out if the company that was thinking about moving in had gotten all of their permits and everything they needed to move forward. And if there wasn't, if there was a hangup on Monday morning, the Commissioner of Transportation or Environmental Protection would get a phone call from the governor saying, "What's the problem? How do we solve it?" And I get the impression that Governor Lamont is fully engaged in trying to move on all of these issues personally, and it's a priority, and that makes a difference.[1265.23][1265.23][applause]
Thank you. Thank you.
The last 40 years, everything has been done on to help retirees. As a result, Connecticut is routinely ranked in the bottom quarter of states of retirement. Speaking of taxes, the two that are closest to our hearts and that we would love to see active relief on are, number one, we're a state that has high taxes on social security. Number two, the new, or relatively new inheritance tax laws are just about full terms, and going to be equally legal to state. The people that fly toward better than Florida, yeah, we're here, we're along the same road as I'm talking, and there are more people, retired people now living in state.
Let me see. First of all, on the state tax, since I think that was part of your question, and the relatively high cost, what we did, working together, we raised the exemption to $22 million over the next few years, matching what we do with the federal government. So, we're more aggressive, really, than any other state in the region, and that we're going to continue to make sure we stay very, very competitive on that front. On the property tax, we're going to work together on this, but outside of fully funding education, I was just talking to your mayor, we've got to do a better job. You had a property tax credit, a circuit breaker, that got taken away a couple of years ago.[1351.33][1351.33][music] And we're still going to fight for it.[1356.15][1356.15][laughter] And, you know, right now, it's sort of an unfunded mandate on the backs of residents of Southbury and our other communities, and that's something we got to work on together.
Again, let me just mention, in terms of social security, we have cut the amount of taxation. We've exempted a lot of social security, and pension fund income is being exempted as well. We are trying to make Connecticut a more favorable place for people to retire to. It's not easy because of the financial problem to cut taxes for any group of people, but we have made some strides in the direction of reducing social security and pension costs.[1396.65][1396.65][applause]
Good morning, Governor. Thank you for coming. I'm sorry, my question is about taxes again. Connecticut has the most number and proportion of millionaires of any state in the Union. We also have the largest income and wealth disparity of any state in the Union. So, my question for you is, why, when we are trying to find ways to expand our revenue base, why are we going to a regressive tax, which is what sales tax is? It doesn't matter whether you're raising the rates on people, or whether you are expanding the number of things that you're taxing, it is a regressive tax. The burden falls most heavily on people of middle and lower income, and especially if it is for things that they need to buy. So, my question is, why are we not raising the marginal state income tax rate cap on the highest income earners? This doesn't mean that we increase the rates on people who are already paying income tax, but instead of having it be capped out at $500,000 for an individual and $1 million for a family, why not let the rate incrementally go forward up for the people who can most afford it?
Understood.[1473.54][1473.54][applause] Because we've raised it four times in the last 10 years, because we're already 40% more than they are in Massachusetts, where we lose some population too, we're in a very, very, very competitive world. And I've got to do, make sure that Connecticut maintains its competitive edge. And, uh, so that's why I'm not raising rates on anybody. I've tried to hold the line on that. And when it comes to fairness, what I've tried to do is, in terms of property tax, in terms of investment education, in terms of opportunity, make sure that this is a place of opportunity. So, rather than always talking about taxes and them paying a little more and them paying a little less, you know, I want to do everything I can to expand our base, expand the economic pie. We're one of the last states in the country that really has had some of the slowest growth. We haven't even recovered all the jobs we lost back in 2009 and 2010. So, I'll defer to my friends up here as well, but I'm doing everything I can to make sure that Connecticut keeps our competitive edge. We also do what we can to support the middle class and support education and support opportunity for everybody.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
When, when you said that you, that Connecticut has raised the income tax four times in, you know, recent years, do you mean that the rate, income tax rate has raised, or that the cap, that the highest income at which the increment stops has been raised?
Well, certainly the rate has gone up.
Because those are two different questions.
You know, Roland, Rel, Malloy, they all raised the...
Yeah, those are two different questions, sir.
I understand. You asked me, A, did you, did we raise the rate? The answer is yes. Did we raise the threshold? We changed those thresholds a little bit as well. So, I think the answer to that is yes on both counts, but I'll defer to you guys.
Thank you.
You were here during that time.
Definitely, there were...
Did we change the thresholds?
Yeah. And rates, and I believe we have bumped up thresholds, where we've created higher thresholds for a rate that is higher for you over those limits, the $500,000 and the $1 million. That was not the way it was 15 years ago. So, there have been those increases. But let me address the point that I think you're making, and why I don't, I don't presume to speak for the governor, but for myself, I would say, if there's a point at which we, and we don't know exactly where it is, when someone like Raymond Dalio, the wealthiest man in Connecticut, if you raise taxes on someone like that, to us, at some point, he and his accountant say to him, "It makes sense for you to move, at least for tax purposes, to become a resident of another state." We lose one person like that, and that's tens of millions of dollars of tax revenue. And that's, at least from my perspective, it's not that I feel sorry for Ray Dalio. He certainly doesn't, you know, he's, he's doing just fine. But if he pulls out of Connecticut, and he pulls, or he pulls his hedge fund out of Connecticut, that is tremendously damaging to our economy, and it costs us tens of millions of dollars, maybe even hundreds of millions of dollars of lost revenue. That's, we have to be careful not to drive those people out. A few hundred of them, and it will change Connecticut tremendously.
I'd only add that while we didn't raise rates on Ray Dalio, he's contributed $100 million to the state of Connecticut to invest in education for our poorest kids.[1696.86][1696.86][applause]
Definitely, there were...
Did we change the thresholds?
And rate, rates, and I believe we have bumped up thresholds, where we've created higher thresholds for a rate that is higher for you over those limits, the $500,000 and the $1 million. That was not the way it was 15 years ago. So there have been those increases. Let me address the point that I think you're making, and why I don't presume to speak for the governor, but for myself, I would say, if there's a point at which, and we don't know exactly where it is, when someone like Raymond Dalio, the wealthiest man in Connecticut, if you raise taxes on someone like that, to, at some point, he and his accountant say to him, "It makes sense for you to move, at least for tax purposes, to become a resident of another state." We lose one person like that, and that's tens of millions of dollars of tax revenue. And that's, at least from my perspective, it's not that I feel sorry for Ray Dalio. He certainly doesn't, no, he's doing just fine. But if he pulls out of Connecticut, and he pulls, or he pulls his hedge fund out of Connecticut, that is tremendously damaging to our economy, and it costs us tens of millions of dollars, maybe even hundreds of millions of dollars of lost revenue. That's, we have to be careful not to drive those people out. A few hundred of them, and it will change Connecticut tremendously.
I'd only add that while we didn't raise rates on Ray Dalio, he's contributed $100 million to the state of Connecticut to invest in education for our poorest kids.
I might have scared some people away who thought this mic wasn't working. I apologize for that. But just would like to take the opportunity to ask the governor to talk a little bit more about his recent executive directive regarding going, moving towards a carbon-neutral or carbon-free environment. Can you say something about that?
Look, sometimes here in the political world, you've got to think more than the next election, you've got to think about not just the next 10 years, you've got to think about the next generation. And so it's not just, you know, me, Ed. I've sat down with Andrew Cuomo, I've sat down with Charlie Baker in Massachusetts, I've sat down with Gina Raimondo, and what can we do as a region to reduce our carbon footprint, reduce the amount of CO2? And it's not just a health issue, it's not just if you live along I-84 with all the congestion, your kids are much more likely to have asthma if you live along there. We are working like heck, Ed, right now, in terms of protecting all the things on the waterfront. You know, those are electric substations, those are part of our power grid. So the future of the state is at risk, you know, not in the next five years, don't get panicked, but we've got to start thinking about what we do. So Connecticut is going to be a leader there. I'm trying to do it in a thoughtful way, by the way, that also maintains, doing what we can to hold down the high price of electricity. I think we've got a good balance there, and, but I appreciate your asking that question, because these are the long-term things we've got to think about as political leaders.
Yeah, the thing is, and this has been a long-term commitment of the state of Connecticut, we had something called the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative that started back in the Rell administration, and Connecticut has been making efforts to reduce greenhouse gases. Obviously, as a small state, we have a limited amount of impact on the whole world, but certainly whatever we can do is worth doing in terms of reducing the impact of the carbon.
Let me just add one other small thing. It's also pretty good for jobs and for business. I mean, we defunded the Energy Efficiency Fund for a little bit, that money is back in the budget. What that means is, we're going to be hiring thousands of young people who make your condo or make your homes more energy-efficient, you know, changing out some of the old appliances, putting in some insulation, bringing down the high cost of power for folks. Here, your heat is all electric, so it's really expensive. And those are the type of investments we make that are good for business, bring down the high cost for middle-class households, as well as dealing with climate change.
Okay. Good morning, Governor, and thank you for being here. We really appreciate it. Okay, can you hear me?
Sure, can.
Thank you. I've lived in this state a number of years, and I've lived outside of this state for a number of years, and this state is nickel and diming us to death. Everything, you don't see this in other states. So coming back to Connecticut has been a struggle, as living on a limited income. We were told, when I moved in, I was told by one of the selectmen that, "Oh, don't worry, you know, Heritage Village is doing things to help the seniors." I have not seen any of that help. Back in 2011, apparently, I was not here then, but apparently there was some kind of a thing to help our citizens with energy. They were going to change the electricity that we're on here in Heritage Village, it was just killing us. It's so, it's useless, we're all freezing in the winter, and we pay such high rates. Representative O'Neill and others, I think, passed something that in 2011, these other corporations were coming in to give us other methods of heat. Maybe Mr. O'Neill can talk about that and what happened to that. It was a big deal in 2011, you read about it, and then it disappeared. So we have no new means of electricity, I mean, not electricity, but of heat. And can something be done about that, really? And the nickel and diming on getting taxes on your car every year? I mean, other states don't do that, they're fine states to live in. I don't know what has happened to Connecticut over these years, but can you do something to help at least the citizens here in Heritage Village to get off the electricity grid and get into something better? Solar? And then we find out solar is so darned expensive, and I don't know if Connecticut is offering any incentives for people to get solar.
A, we offer those incentives under the Green Bank, fully funded again, and I'd love to work with Heritage Village on ways that you can, you know, get less dependent on the grid that holds down pricing. Let me ask you your bigger, your bigger question, though, and, you know, maybe, Eric, you can help me out on this as well, follow up on what Arthur said. Look, I come out of small business. I remember, everything was done with paper, it took weeks to get a response back from government, and we, I did feel like we were getting nickel and dime to death. And we've tried to do a couple of things, you know, Arthur mentioned, you know, if you're a new business, you want to come to the state of Connecticut, you've got to go to Economic Development, then you've got to go to DEEP, which are the environmental people. We've got, the bid is out on the street right now, so we're going to have all of that electronically in one screen. We'll be, we're going to have a cost here, somebody that answers your question for you, if we can't do it for you in real time. I spent a lot of time with a consumer protection group. Why does a plumber have to get recertified every year at, you know, $100 bucks or something like that? It's not like plumbing changes that much year in and year out. I think we are nickel and diming people to death, and we're going to make those changes there. I'm making the changes, look, we're on a debt diet, as these guys can tell you, I'm not big on borrowing money. We've been borrowing ourselves to death over the last 30 years. That's a bipartisan train wreck, from my point of view, bipartisan train wreck. But I do believe in IT, and I do believe in a move in our government. We're going to reduce the size of government dramatically. We're going to have 30% of our state employees retiring over the next three, four, five years. And it's not necessary that we replace everybody, it is necessary to make our government more lean, more efficient, and more on time, so you don't feel like you're getting nickel and dime to death.
I hope, okay. And we'll get different kind of methods of heat in this Heritage Village. That's really important.
Eric, you take the heat question.
I've got, Representative O'Neill may have some insight into that. He was part of that little group.
We're kind of struggling a little bit to remember precisely what you're talking about. We restructured electric rates in Connecticut a long time ago, and that's a long story, and we don't have time to go into it. It did not reduce electric costs the way restructuring and competition did for telephones. Remember when it used to cost so much money to have a cellphone or to have telephone service? That got restructured, costs came down. It didn't work in electricity.
Same with airfare.
And airfare, and other things have worked very well, where when you create competition, you get costs cut down. That's the magic of the market. Well, it didn't work in electricity, in part because electricity, I guess, is just different enough that it doesn't work. In terms of finding alternatives, we've tried to authorize wind things as a way to get alternatives. Problem is, Connecticut has only one place in the state where wind really makes sense, and that's off the coast of New London or at New London, and that doesn't really help us that much. We've tried to bring in electricity from other places, eliminate bottlenecks, which caused congestion charges and things like that. It is a real problem, because we don't have the production. If Millstone ever does go offline, we do have a real problem in terms of production here in the state of Connecticut. I think it's 40% of all of our electrons come from them. And, you know, we have a real problem with energy. It, again, wasn't planned properly. Everybody thought nuclear was the answer. These are decisions you make over 30, 40-year periods of time. The decision was made to do nuclear instead of bringing in power from Quebec, because people thought that it was better to have homegrown electricity, I guess. But it's really hard now to fix this problem. With respect to, say, Heritage Village, and I know I'm going to touch a lightning rod here, but the governor mentioned, and people mentioned solar. You know, maybe solar panels would be helpful, but that's a decision the folks in the village have to make. Do you want to allow solar panels on your condos? And go forward with that? That's, but I'm not going to force that on the folks in the village. That's a decision that you have to make as to whether you're willing to go that route. But maybe that's one piece of the problem, a little piece of reducing your energy cost is with something like that. There are some things that can be done. Gas is, could be a helpful thing. We do have gas lines that run through Southbury. We could tap into that, but again, it's expensive to create a gas line to come to a place like the village. You've got some gas, but to go all gas, which would probably be less than electricity, is a big upfront expense that has to be decided on.
I thought there was some kind of agreement that these, the gas companies and others were going to come in to Heritage Village and discuss it with the people, and I guess nothing's happened ever since.
Arthur, if I could just, Arthur, just to clarify, the problem, we did talk to the gas companies, and they said, "If you can get everybody in Heritage Village to agree to move to natural gas, we would build the pipeline." Now, you know, it is very difficult to get everybody in Heritage Village to agree to do something. And that's the problem for a condominium.
Maybe, maybe 50%.
The governor's schedule only allows about five more minutes. Just one comment, we welcome any opportunity to work with the governor's office on our utility needs. We have a treasurer who dreams big, and he'd like to have a solar farm somewhere, so we're all taken care of. It's long-range planning that we have to begin to look at one step at a time, but any assistance we can get from the state would be terrific. So if you could limit your questions now to one minute, because I think there's four or five people left.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
One more question about, another question about energy. What kind of incentives would there be for a municipality to go solar or renewable energy so that we could reduce our CO2 emission signature throughout the state on a municipal level?
First of all, we've got in place incentives. If you do it on a municipal-wide basis, or like Ed said, in terms of all Heritage Village, there are extraordinary economies there that bring down the price, you know? One or two solar panels on a roof, you know, you can net meter, you can sell that energy back into the grid when you don't need it. So there are some things that you can do there. But, you know, Arthur said, what happened to power? You know, it worked when we deregulated airplanes, and it worked when we deregulated some other things. Well, nuclear represented almost 50% of our power. I mean, there's not a free market, so to speak, for power. And when they said, "We may have to pull the plug," I said, "Well, thank God, we've got solar and wind, we've got some alternatives." And they said, "You don't have any alternatives." You know, that's a 10-year project to get that going. So we are planning that now, so we're not going to be caught unawares. And I'll tell you the other thing, you mentioned what you could do on a municipal-wide basis, because you do it on scale. I'm trying to do that as a region. I'm trying to go out there with Rhode Island and Massachusetts and say, "We're going to buy our wind power together. And if the three of us do that, then you have enough scale that I can make wind very competitive with, you know, other forms of energy right now." So we are thinking 10 years out on this, and I like the way you're thinking. If you do it on a municipal basis, you're going to get some real savings.
Good morning, Governor. I'd like to get away from the economics in a moment here, and discuss the situation with the inner cities. When I moved here in 1976, Connecticut was one of the safest places to live. I'm sorry to say, this is no longer the case. I question going into Hartford, Bridgeport, and other cities. What are we going to do to enforce the laws that are there on the books? In addition to that, maybe it's a good idea we come back to having the death penalty. That, that is the strongest way to make sure that people stop shooting other people. I know that that's a very disturbing issue, but I'd sure like to know what we can do to stop this crime wave.
Want to take a couple more questions?
Sure. The governor has made more time in his schedule, we have time for three more questions.
Well, take them all at one time, then we can...
All at once? All right. If you, if you ask your question all at once, you'll get a response. So please step up to the mic.
I'm going to change the subject here, but I want to talk about the roads. Okay? We have the highest gas taxes in the area. We got, you want to put tolls in now? And I don't know where the money's going for the roads. Okay? I see this 84 over here, and the construction goes on for months and months and months. What are we going to do to speed up the construction? And what are we going to do to get the roads back in shape so we can drive on them?
Next question. Go ahead.
Okay. Governor, I heard, read something about there being legislation proposing to tax nonprofit organizations like hospitals and churches. Do you believe that nonprofit organizations like churches and hospitals should be taxed?
Last question. Yes, sir.
I'm not here to ask a question, but I want to thank Governor Lamont for stopping in my office, taking time out of his busy schedule to talk about issues in Southbury. I do appreciate you doing that. I think, frankly, there will be an open dialogue between my office and your office, you've proven that, also meeting with your lieutenant governor at another meeting. That's two more meetings that I've had with heads of state here than had ever happened before. Governor Lamont, I want to, I appreciate you stopping in to see us. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff, and that, that open dialogue will continue. Let it, we'll each take a crack at this as we wrap up here. Cities and crime, and, you know, there's actually some good news. I mean, the crime rate is, you know, at an historic low, so, sir, you should feel free to, you know, visit Hartford or New Haven. And I'll go even further. I mean, the crime rate is down at the same time that our incarcerated population is down, we're doing a better job of, you know, getting those folks back employed in the workforce. That means less recidivism, less likely that they commit another crime. So I think we're making some good progress on that. There was, there was the question about transportation. Look, we, it took forever to fix that I-84, you know, bottleneck that led into Waterbury, but it speeds things up about 20 minutes. And there are more darned bottlenecks all over the state of Connecticut, so we have, I have a lot of discussions I've got to do with the legislature, but I just think that speeding up our transportation system, having more regular rail service in and out of Waterbury, getting the Danbury Line into New York, fixing I-84, so you can get from, get from here down to New York a lot easier, is just absolutely key to Connecticut's future and keeping our young people here. And we, I got a little battle with the legislature, but you know me, I don't want to put all that on the backs of our kids, I don't want to put that on the Connecticut credit card, and I do think we have to find a way to pay for it. And, look, I like to get things done, and I'm ready to compromise, I'm ready down to sit with anybody, but I want to solve it for real. I just don't want to do this thing piecemeal anymore. You know, our infrastructure's 100 years old. The rail, you know, the trains slow to a crawl over these 90-year-old bridges. So there's so much we can do if we invest strategically. I'm a business guy, I'm going to make darn sure I do everything I can to convince you that that money is really well-spent. And I can't remember the third question, so why don't you take it?
Someone asked a question about taxation of private, not-for-profit organizations, churches, hospitals, and so on. I don't think that, and I assume that the tax that's being talked about is a property tax being imposed. This is an issue in some of the cities, particularly Hartford, New Haven, when you've got really big nonprofit organizations that are tax-exempt, and they aren't able to tax 30, 40, 50% of the buildings that exist within their borders, and therefore they're shoveling the entire tax burden onto the business community and to homeowners that are struggling because they have low incomes. On the other hand, I understand that that problem exists. I think that if we, if we were to start taxing, and you can't just say we're going to tax the churches in New Haven, or we're going to tax Yale, but we're not going to tax Trinity, or something like that, because Yale's got a big endowment and Trinity doesn't have much, or has much. I mean, we, there may be an adjustment that needs to be made in the way that's done. The state has tried, and we do give a lot of money to Hartford, and New Haven, and Bridgeport, and other cities in the state, to make up for the fact that they don't have the tax base that they used to, when, for example, in the case of Waterbury, we had all those brass mills. Or in the case of Hartford, we had all those factories that made things like typewriters, and other factories in Bridgeport, that are all gone, and that have never been replaced by anything that will pay taxes to them. And what is there are hospitals, which take care of people, but they have a financial struggle. The state does tax the hospitals, it's a complicated, crazy... It's a complicated, crazy thing that's a result of some weird financing rules the feds have, not property taxes, but on their incomes and so forth, and that's creating something of a crisis, I think, in terms of the healthcare system in the state of Connecticut. But I really think that churches and other charitable institutions provide, and hospitals provide important services and jobs, and if you start taxing them as well with the property tax without some kind of special recognition of their status, of what they do, you just impose the same tax on them that you would impose on somebody running a shopping mall, that you're going to cause more harm than good with that kind of a proposal. I really think that we have to be very sensitive to the ability of these organizations, that many cases are delicately balanced, their ability to continue to survive with the limited funds that they have and the limited amount of state aid that the cities get and that they get as well.
So I'd like to, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank...
Hold on.
Oh, sorry.
So I'd just like to speak briefly about the transportation issue. I would say to you that arguably the largest number of inquiries that I receive in my Senate office is around tolls. Where is the money going? Why aren't we fixing our roads? It has to focus on transportation, because where we live, which is arguably the most beautiful place anywhere in the United States, I would say anywhere in the world, in Connecticut, it's iconic, it's lovely, we have four great seasons, it's wonderful. But we have to get in a car or get on a train generally to go anywhere. We can't walk a whole lot of places. You can't walk from here to Danbury or here to Waterbury, or maybe you could, but it would take you a long time. So I think that in the legislature, we fundamentally agree on both sides and with the governor's office, that transportation needs to be a priority for Connecticut, and for all the reasons that the governor spoke to, that we need to fix our infrastructure so that we can attract businesses to come back to Connecticut and to stay in Connecticut, and young people, and people who are still working, and retirees. Let's make it a little bit easier to get around. I think where we have the divide, and we don't have time, and it's a good way to end, we can just leave this lead balloon, if you will, floating over the crowd, right? Where we have the divide is how do we pay for it? And that's a question that we ask on a lot of issues in Hartford on a regular basis in the legislature and with the governor's office. I think there's some creative solutions that are forthcoming before the end of the year, maybe sooner than that. Whether or not we can all get to the same page on that, who knows? But I would say, don't give up hope with respect to fixing Connecticut and getting good roads and good rail. You know, the Waterbury Line right now has bus service between Waterbury and Bridgeport on purpose, planned, because they are installing some important safety features as they add sidings to that. It will no longer take an hour to go 30 miles from Waterbury to Bridgeport when that piece is installed and reopened after, I believe, after the first of the year. So stay tuned, I guess, I would say, with respect to transportation. We hear what you're saying about it, and I think we all agree that it needs to be fixed.
Hey, Jerry, let me just say one last thing, if I could. I don't want to end on a lead balloon.[1700.66][1700.66][laughter] I ran for governor, and I am so proud to be your governor. And one reason I ran, because I thought the state had a little bit of a crisis of confidence. I really did. I thought we were a little down on ourselves, and I'm running because this is the most amazing state in the country. As Eric said, it's beautiful, you've got the four seasons, our strategic location is invaluable, some of our major companies are hiring, but more importantly, I've got to do everything I can to make you believe in this state, and make sure your kids and grandkids believe in this state as well. Do everything I can to turn this around. Look, as Arthur said, we're just getting started, and we've got a lot of work to do. We made some lousy decisions in the state going back well over a generation, but we're starting to make this difference right now. I do it with my friends in the legislature, but I believe in this state, and my job is to make sure that each and every one of you believe in it as well. Thanks, everybody.[1754.94][1754.94][applause]
Thank you.[1756.94][1756.94][applause]
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'll see you.[1760.94][1760.94][applause] Thank you. I appreciate that. I'll see you. Bye. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'll see you. Bye. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'll see you. Bye. Thank you. Bye. Thank you. 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 Thank you.